Okay, well their restaurant at that casino there is good.
That's uh, for me and showing people.
That's, that's, that's a good, that's a good restaurant there at Miami. And uh, I was gonna tell you that uh, about my trip to home last night. I couldn't see about from here to that chair. But I put on my blinkers and I had a pickup right in front of me with the blinkers. They got me to sunset. And then, then I turned it down, then I was on my own. But had my blinkers going, I get home, no problem. I negotiated around a couple of vehicles blocking the highway, but through the street. So I get in, but I turn to go down my drive, I cannot see a damn thing. Yeah, so I just keep going, you know, which was a mistake. So I started good. Got a dugout, got a dugout that day.
Well, I was waiting for you to call. We, I'd sent a crew over there, they had a dugout.
Mike, my son-in-law. He, he went over there, I mean, I was to me shoveled out all around it. And so when I got home.
Good boy.
Yeah, when I went boating, my daughter dropped me off. But she came, she waited. I said, let me see if I can get it out of here. And then my next door neighbor, Quinn, he had his caboodle there, you know, he says, hey. So we shoveled around the wheel so I could back up. And then he got his caboodle in there, got her all cleared off.
Nice.
Good order, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah, offered me a coffee and something. I got city council meeting.
Just hold it something?
Yeah, hold it, maybe, maybe it won't be long, I don't know.
It shouldn't be.
Remote, remote learning, yeah. Yeah. For us, yeah. Remote learning.
You might need to check.
Aw, man.
How's that card that is?
Oh, it's great.
Yeah?
Even more before we tried that, which I did when I got home last night.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's snow built up all the time. I got that four.
Yeah, I know, I don't know how to raise these things.
All right, everybody ready? You ready, Levona? All right. Good evening, everybody hear me? All right? Like to welcome you to the first meeting in 2024 of the Guiman City Council. So at this time, I'd like to invite Pastor Eugene Light from the Victory Center Church to come up and give her invocation. Just wherever you're comfortable, just if you hit to the mic, it'll be on the TV.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, it's a pleasure and a privilege to be here with you, especially on this first day of 2024. Uh, I believe it is very fitting to honor the Lord first and foremost in our year, and then also in this meeting. So if you'll allow me, I would like to read Proverbs, Proverbs eight fifteen through seventeen, or a portion of scripture thereof. By wisdom kings reign, and rulers make laws that are just. By me, wisdom, princes govern, and all nobles who rule on earth. I love those who love me, and those who seek me find me. Thank you, Lord, for all of our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and their sacrifice. May you continually bless them. May you generously, generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people in this city. Give the mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council wisdom that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Idson, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called the meeting, the regular city council, this be the general Guiman Utilities Authority. Agenda item number one is attended, agenda item number two is attendance roll call and determination of the form.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedres?
Present.
Mr. Setzer?
Present.
Ms. Sanchez? Mr. Idson?
Uh, here, here.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon? We have a form.
Agenda item number three is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 12th of 2023.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of uh, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez? Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is to, wait. Do we need to approve the purchase orders?
That was the consent agenda.
That can, okay. Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on resolution number twenty-four dash oh one directing apportionment of the increments generated in the current fiscal year and directing dispersment of the portioned funds for the current fiscal year from the tax increment district number two of the city of Guiman. This is.
Just a resolution, just allowing us to go ahead and pay our TIF payments this year. A TIF too.
We get to smell it as it goes by. Any questions, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we pass resolution number twenty-four oh one directing apportionment of the increments generated in the current fiscal year and directing dispersment of the apportioned funds for the current fiscal year from tax increment district number two, city of Guiman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty-four dash oh two, a resolution of the city of Guiman adopting supplement number two from ordinance number eight eighty-two through ordinance eight eighty-nine to the municipal code of ordinances. Resolution is attached.
Mayor, this is just allowing all the ordinances that this board passed in 2023 to go and be codified and put into code book.
Double stamp.
Questions, motion?
I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-four dash zero two, resolution of the city of Guiman adopting supplement number two from ordinance number eight eighty-two through ordinance number eight eighty-nine to the municipal code of ordinances, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson? Mr. Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve revised golf course fees effective January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm assuming this was due, right? Been at the same.
I'm just gonna defer that over to Ginger. Yes.
In the December council session, you guys approved to have the five percent increase. Uh, but one of the things that the guys that are out of golf course have done typically in the past is have the fees rounded up to the next dollar. And so that's what they are requesting again, and we didn't do that in the last approval. So it's just by a few cents, and they just wanna go ahead and round it up to that next dollar, and that's what they're seeking approval for. But we cannot, we can't send that fee out to them the way it was before, so we have to actually have councils approval for that roundup. Any questions?
I make a motion, we approve revised golf course fees effective January tenth, twenty twenty-four, item six.
Second that.
Have a motion and two seconds?
Sure.
Josh. Mr. Setzer.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to approve the following budget amendments. Seven point one is budget amendment number four for fund oh one, the general fund, for an increase of seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Budget number four, budget amendment number four for oh one is attached. Seven point two is budget amendment number two for fund sixteen, Guiman Development Fund, for an increase of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Seven point three is budget amendment number three for fund twenty-eight, hotel motel tax fund for an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars. Seven point four is budget amendment number one for fund forty-two, the ARPA fund, for an increase of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. Seven point five is budget amendment number two for fund forty-four, sales tax general capital improvement fund for an increase of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Seven point six is a budget amendment number one for fund eighty-four, the Guiman Industrial Fund, for an increase of twenty-five thousand and eighty-three dollars.
Mayor, I'd like to kinda just take, hit kinda on the high spots of that. Uh, the seven point one is to the general fund increase. We added on two pretty good employees this last year, and that's mainly what that's taking care of in, 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 in the administration. Uh, we hired a civil engineer and assistant city manager. So that's, that's part of that increase with all their gross overtime, salary and wages, all the life insurance and stuff like that. So, uh, that pretty well took care of, uh, the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars transfer. Good thing about all these transfers, we do have the money to do the transfers. That's always a good thing to do.
Come on, keeps the auditor happy.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. It just seems like a lot, uh, but this is things going into twenty twenty-three that we were, uh, I had no idea we was gonna find a, a, two employees. Well, I kinda had an idea, but they're just hard way to budget that out, so we just do it by budget amendment, so. Then the next one was the, for the forty-seven. I was gonna have all these memorized, but I didn't.
Guiman Development Fund.
Right, uh.
Forty-seven, two, two, three.
Right. Rhonda, you can just jump in there at any time, but you're, I think we can, uh. Oh, we had some soccer field capital expenses of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars. Then about four years ago, we entered into an agreement to do a streetscape mutification, and, and we had to pay that off this year. That's, that's the forty-seven thousand, or it was thirty thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, yes, this next one for the twenty-five thousand, whoop. We just need to scratch that, and there was some miscommunication between myself and, and Rhonda. It was, it was my fault, so we need to scratch that. We're good, we're good on that one. Thank you, Rhonda. Uh, the next amendment was for, oh, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six ninety-five. Uh, we had to transfer money to pay for the remainder of the golf course. As we know, that come in a little over budget, so we had some reserves and some ARPA funds that we used to do that. In order to do that, we had to transfer money from, keep me. Exactly. From the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Okay. Then the last one, I think this is the last one. Yeah, the TIF. Which. That's the money coming in there to last of twenty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars. And I think that's the last one, wasn't it, Rhonda? Yep.
So staff recommendation is to approve all of them but seven three?
That is correct.
Make a motion that we approve the following budget amendments under item seven and pool seven point three.
I, I second that.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action toward Charles White State Farm Insurance with a BIG grant in the amount, in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
Well, Sheila's getting up here, uh, she's gonna present that to the board, but this is a, a grant that I'm, I like. Uh, it's just the way the city can help some of our local businesses make themselves more curb appeal. More people that, that they feel like they can get into their business, the better, so it's all yours, Sheila.
Good afternoon. Uh, so the first one is for Charles White in the amount of five thousand dollars. In the December twenty-first meeting, the Convention and Tourism Board recommended awarding the big grant to Charles White in the amount of five thousand, the grant will go towards their building located on seventeen fifty-four North Academy Street. The proposed improvements are for a new entryway, signage, painting and striping of the parking lot, new lighting for the parking lot, landscaping, and an irrigation system to help with, uh, just kinda the future use of the property.
Now, you'll see where, uh, he just applied and, and it's, there's a max of five thousand per year, and you'll see where he's expended a lot more than that to do all that, but that, uh, he's, he's maxed out the grant. Uh, there was some confusion at our last convention tourism meeting, but we've cleared that up. Uh, and we went back to the ordinance, basically. They're just, they can be awarded, uh, one, maxed out at five thousand per year.
Okay, do you have any questions, discussion?
Make a motion that we, uh, award Charles White State Farm Insurance with a big grant in the amount of five thousand dollars recommended by CNT Board, item eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to award Fish and Hitch Flower Company with a BIG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board. Ms. Martin?
So this one is another one that discussed on the twenty-first, and they voted to recommend awarding the big grant to Fish and Hitch. This would go towards their building on one, two, three North Main. The proposed improvements will improve in their outdoor space to include a fireplace, a deck around the barn, uh, and a mural on the barn. If you, if you go down on their application, it looks like it's a little over thirty thousand dollars. And we've actually used that space on multiple times when we have like night markets, whenever we were entertaining our OML leadership, um, as well as the main street directors, the national main street directors had a leadership here. So we've used that space multiple times within the community to kind of appreciate, and I think it's a great idea. I know some of the improvements they've already done. Is there any questions?
Any questions, comments?
These are all storefronts, right? The next.
Yes.
All these five are all storefronts. Correct. Make a motion that we award Fish and Hitch Flower Company with a big grant in the amount of five thousand dollars recommended by Convention and Tourism Board, item nine.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Agenda item number ten is discussion and possible action to award Buyer's Painting LLC with a BIG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board. Ms. Martin?
This is the third one that they spoke about at the meeting, and they approved to recommend awarding the grant to Buyer's Painting. This would go towards their building located on thirteen ten Maple Street. Uh, the proposed improvement is painting a metal building, replacing the wooden part of the fencing and painting the fence to match the building, a new sign and replacing a porch light with a monitor detector, with a motion detector, sorry. Uh, they have been in business for well over twenty years in the community, and they just purchased their first actual, um, business, like, brick and mortar, so they're just trying to revamp that. The total cost of this one is a little over twelve thousand dollars.
Questions, discussion?
I make a motion to award the Buyer's Painting LLC with the big BIG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
Isn't this located in like a neighborhood?
It is in a residential area, but the property is commercial.
Councilman, uh, that, that's a good question. During the process of submitting the application, it, it, it has a set of rules, and as you scroll through this, you'll see where all the boxes, yeah. That was, that's funny, that was one of my questions. Yeah, just where it said, but we're back in zone, it is zone properly.
Yes, sir, one of the things, it has to be commercially, commercially zoned property,
and we did check before I even allowed, uh, let, you know, allowed them to apply just because I didn't want them to go through the process and waste their time.
Yeah, I just knew there was a house on the corner there.
Yes.
I'll take, I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eleven is discussion and possible action to award La Amistad with the BIG grant in the amount of five thousand as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
So this is another one that was discussed on December twenty-first Convention and Tourism, uh, meeting. This would go towards the rehabilitation of their store awning located at five oh eight North Main Street. The improvements, uh, the proposed improvements include storefront awning, a metal white laminated panel. The metal laminated panel is needed to replace the section where the current awning, awning is and is caving in. Uh, the total cost for this is a little over twelve thousand dollars.
I might add just to that, this is the second. We, there was, uh, awarded in twenty twenty-three, and this will be, or could be their second one, uh, for twenty twenty-four. It's, uh, it's a, if you've not been in there, you oughta go in there.
I make a motion to award La Amistad with the BIG grant in the total amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Agenda item number twelve, discussion and possible action to award Horizon Healing Chiropractic Center with the BIG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism.
This is the final one for today. So the same thing during the twenty, uh, during the meeting on December twenty-first, they, CNT has approved awarding the BIG grant to Horizon Healing, which will go towards the facade of their building located on nine, ten North Main. Uh, since they submitted this, they've already started on some of the work. So the improvement was the new stucco application, new painting on all, on all exterior walls, a new soffit and faucet, and they will be painting the windows and brick facade to match the new stucco. And that's our, the total amount for this was twenty-five thousand.
Questions, motion?
I make a motion to award the Horizon Healing Chiropractic Center with the BIG grant in the amount of five thousand dollars as recommended by the Convention and Tourism Board.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number thirteen is discussion and possible action to authorize purchases associated with the Oklahoma Emergency Response Systems Stabilization and Improvement Revolving Fund, OERSSIRF grant, including the purchase of medical equipment with a total project cost of three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Chief?
That's still a mouthful to say.
Well, this.
That's the worst acronym in the world.
I didn't make it up, I just.
That's my own, your tongue brings.
The worst.
So this is, this is one, we actually started looking at this grant, um, uh, did I put it on here? Was it May? Uh, in May, and they, they ended up restructuring the grant, so we had to restructure our proposal. Uh, we've tried to keep it, uh, within the bounds of the original grant, um, but we had to add in some, uh, other grant requirements. Uh, however, we already do all those other grant requirements in-house, so it's things that are in our regular budget that count towards the matching funds. So as a result, we were able to, um, increase our, our grant funds amount to that hundred and ninety thousand with a forty percent match. Um, so we were awarded the grant, um, so this is to request permission to, to spend all that money and, and purchase the, the equipment. There's a lot of different pieces of equipment we'll purchase. Uh, some of them are in preparation, the county has purchased an ambulance. Uh, it's still in the works, hopefully we're gonna receive delivery in July. Maybe June. I'm hoping for June, but it's probably gonna be July. Um, but once we receive that unit, then we'll be able to fully stock that unit and place it into service so that we'll be able to run five units simultaneously, which is an issue we've had in the past where we've once been in the shop and we've had to borrow an ambulance, or we haven't had enough and, and had to have someone come and help us out. So this will increase the capabilities of the Guiman Fire Department by adding an additional unit to the fleet, as well as increasing our capabilities by adding mechanical CPR devices, that's right?
And you gotta, you gotta be after it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You're here.
Yeah, it seems like two or three times a year, we're approving some sort of a grant for the fire department to be.
Right, and to be fair, this is the second time that you're approving this.
Right, yeah, right, right, just restructured.
Because we had to restructure it. Um, but yeah, we, we are going out for grants, and, and I think it's, it's showing in, in the equipment we have and the, the services we're able, able to provide, um, and, and then the department we have and the abilities we have to serve our community.
Yes, sir.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize purchases associated with Oklahoma Emergency Response Systems Stabilization and Improvement Revolving Funds, OERSSIRF grant, including the purchase of medical equipment with a total project cost of three hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, fifty-five cents, item thirteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thanks, sir. Congratulations. Agenda item number fourteen is discussion and possible action to award bid for weed and trash abatement at lot seven. and trash abatement at lots seven, eight, and nine, Block twenty-four of the Park Edition to the City of Guyman, also known as one-sixteen South Beaver.
Hello.
It's all up to you.
Good evening.
Okay, so, uh, we did the whole bid process, we actually sent it to about thirty contractors so that they can all have the opportunity to bid for this project or for this abatement, and we had two bidders come in, so GMC, GM Construction actually bitted for three thousand dollars, and JRC Construction bitted for two thousand eight hundred for this abatement. So our staff recommendation, we recommend the bid approval for JRC. For one-sixteen South Beaver, it would like to get the property cleaned between January tenth through the twenty-fourth, if weather permits.
I make the motion that we award the bid to JRC Construction for trash abatement at lot seven, eight, nine, Block twenty-four, Park Edition, uh, City of Guyman, AKA six, one-sixteen South Beaver, item fourteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Heidson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item sixteen, we have no, wait.
Fifteen.
Wait, fifteen. My little dead battery deal showed up, so anyway. Uh, agenda item number fifteen is discussion and possible action to award bid for weed and trash abatement for the fiscal year of twenty-twenty-four.
That's actually supposed to be tabled.
Make a motion, we table item fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to table.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Heidson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item sixteen is new business, we have none. Agenda item number seventeen is public comments, seem to have any public comments tonight. Public comments, all right? Not, will stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council will reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Uh, agenda item number three is approve the minutes of the regular meeting December twelfth,
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, item three.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Heidson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action to approve the application for payment number four for Caldwell Tanks Incorporated, the amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents for the three-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank, tank project.
Engineers recommend we pay them. If you've been out to the cemetery, have you, have you seen that piece of pipe sticking out of the ground? It's gonna look different out there.
Yeah, it is.
It's gonna look different out there, but, uh, well-needed, though, very much needed.
It's a tank, not a well.
Huh? What?
I said it's a tank, not a well, you said well-needed.
I did say well-needed.
It was a bad dad joke.
Any discussion, questions?
I'm serious. I make a motion to approve the application for payment number four on the Caldwell Tanks Incorporated to the amount of seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine cents and, or, I'm sorry, seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents for the three-hundred-thousand-gallon elevated water storage tank project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Heidson.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to approve application for payment number five for Gates Utilities LLC in the amount of three, thirty-four thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the northeast ground storage tank project. Mr. Shannon.
It looks like, uh, this is ending, uh, getting pretty close to be our final payment on it. Uh, they predict, uh, be coating it and painting it and sanitizing it, and we should be starting to run water in it sometime February, so don't take 'em long to put a tank up.
This is the final payment?
Uh, this is not final payment, no.
Yeah, we still have a few more.
It's getting real close to the final payment.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand left.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve application for payment number five for Gates Utilities LLC in the amount of three-hundred, thirty-four thousand six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the northeast ground storage tank project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Heidson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda, agenda item number six is discussion and possible action to approve change order number two for a decrease of seventy-five thousand to Gates Utilities LLC for the northeast ground storage tank project.
Always like a decrease, especially in the amount of seventy-five thousand, but, uh, if the ground storage tank is built right next to, uh, an existing, uh, ground storage tank that has our logo on it, and it's just, just didn't need a logo on it, so save seventy-five thousand. We got a place for that seventy-five, but it'll come to you next meeting.
They could serve us some John Deere green spray paint.
I make a motion to approve change order number two for a decrease of seventy-five thousand dollars to a, to Gates Utilities LLC for the northeast ground storage tank project.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Heidson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion and possible action to award a bid for one new and unused four-fifty or forty-five-hundred regular cab truck and one new and unused six-fifty or sixty-five-hundred regular cab truck for the sanitation department and authorizing
Mayor, this is something that's definitely needed, uh, in, in the sanitation. These are, uh, trucks that, uh, we've had budgets on now for two years? Yeah, right at two years. And, uh, they're finally making some of the bigger trucks, so, uh, we, we found some, and they're local. I say Stratford be local, so, Stratford Chevrolet data.
Questions, discussion?
Make a motion, we award the bid for one new and unused four-fifty or forty-five-hundred regular cab truck, or one new and unused six-hundred-and-fifty or sixty-five-hundred regular cab truck for the sanitation department and authorizing payment.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Heidson.
Aye.
Setser.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item eight is new business, we have none. Agenda item number nine is public comments, seem to have any public comments this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports from the city manager and council members.
Uh, before, I got a packet there. I had a question the other day, how come there wasn't any street projects on the, uh, done this last twenty-twenty-three? And it, we applied for a, a community development block grant, but time that grant was, we had to go out and canvas and, and interview a, a block in southeast of Guyman. Time, all that was done, it just, the time scheduling just got us where we couldn't do the project properly. That was unfortunate. Uh, fortunately, we're gonna be able to do twice as much this year, 'cause during the budget, we just doubled the, the cost, so it will be bid out probably in March, and, uh, probably May will be when we'll start doing our chip seal, so that's a good thing. We did get the grant awarded, we have, yes, we did get the grant, uh, it was right at four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so it's all good. Uh, the second thing I've got here, just some little statistics, that, uh, Martin came in the other day, and, and we've got some animals out there, but they keep in the inventory of how many potholes they've patched in twenty-twenty-three. And three-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-nine potholes. I, I'd say that's a lot of potholes. I'm sure there's probably about that many left to do, but, uh, I just thought, I just threw that in. Uh, there's ninety miles of streets, seven-point-eight miles of highway inside the city limits that, uh, we take care of. And when he says highway, that's some of ODOT stuff that we take care of. There are thirteen traffic lights, now there's less than that, because a few of them's been knocked down and tore up, and, you know, the rest of the story. Transportation, the number of miles of the ride, eighty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-six miles last year. They hauled twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-nine, uh, passengers in twenty-twenty-three with a total of seven buses, so I thought that was kind of neat little, uh, uh, numbers to look at. We got to our financials in, these are also, uh, un-audited, um, and I'll share these with you in an email here this week, but, uh, in closing of twenty-twenty-three, we did, I, I think we did pretty good. There's some things we didn't do that we probably should have done, but, uh, normally, you have total assets of carry-on fund balances around the twenty million, uh, we surpassed that. Uh, we had twenty-three million dollars' worth of, uh, cash forwarded on, so had a good year. Uh, revenue versus expenditures, uh, we cleared about two million dollars, so this last twenty-twenty-three. I'll send this to you, and, uh, the reason I hadn't sent it to you, I hadn't went through it yet, if you're right on with me, so. With that, uh, we had a pretty good snowstorm that I think everybody's pretty well aware of. City crews started, uh, yesterday afternoon, about noon. Uh, they were still working when I went in, about midnight last night. Uh, they did a fantastic job, we cooperated with, uh, county and, uh, some of the state people. We did have a little problem, uh, I feel like, on our construction project on Highway fifty-four. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to gather some data before I publicly say some things, so, uh, we did a lot of work last night and throughout the day today, taking care of Highway fifty-four and, uh, on some signage and stuff, but, um, if I get more data, I'll share it with the council. And I think it's, uh, probably, uh, probably a good time to call ODOT and have another little roundtable discussion with them, so. I feel like some things that didn't get done, they was responsible for, so we just need to visit, basically. Uh, other than that, I think, uh, our fire department, and I know our police department, are still probably digging people out, and, uh, overall, it was a good moisture. Uh, I don't think anybody was hurt. I don't think anybody lost any life or anything like that, so that's a positive, so, uh, we learned a lot from this, uh, last twenty-four. Uh, we've already made some policies gonna go into effect, uh, and we'll be, uh, next snowstorm, we'll, twenty-fourth Street, we're gonna really look at twenty-fourth Street from East Street, or really from, from, uh, North Main, uh, to Hurlem, that was a trap. I mean, way of trap, I don't, I think there was over thirty vehicles stalled out there, and we're gonna aggressively shut that down immediately, if it even looks like it's gonna snow or, or ice up or something like that, so. Learned a lot, and, but I'm proud of my crews, they did a fantastic job, and probably for the next two or three days, they'll still be doing fantastic jobs, so, all I got.
I don't have anything here.
No? No. Well, all I've got to do is say is, is echo what Mike said, uh, thank the city crews, everybody, not just our, our people, the county, and everybody's pitched in, and, and, uh, we got through this winter storm, whatever its name was, and we're, hopefully we won't see another one, but we gotta be ready for it.